Good afternoon. Today is September the fifth, two thousand and nineteen. The time is now four thirty P M. A special meeting in the city council of Trinidad will now come to order. Following items are on file for consideration at city council. Item one, acceptance of resignation from city manager Greg Sun. Item two, appointment of interim city manager. Item three, direction regarding filling permanent city manager position. This time we'll take item number one, exec- acceptance of resignation from the city manager Greg Sun. Mister Sun has submitted his resignation to the city council. And we are here tonight to vote whether we accept or not. So at this point in time, I would like to get a motion from council.
So moved.
To what?
To accept his resignation.
Second please.
Second.
Any discussion on the matter, which we take?
Not for me.
Karen.
No second.
Is it?
No second.
Right, no additional comments? Call go please.
Benado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Could you have a comment, if I may, concerning that? And... There are only three people seated. Good afternoon. Today is September the fifth, two thousand and nineteen. The time is now four thirty P M. Special meeting in the city council of Trinidad will now come to order. Following items are on file for consideration at city council. Item one, acceptance of resignation from city manager Greg Sun. Item two, appointment of interim city manager. Item three, direction regarding filling permanent city manager position. This time we'll take item number one, exec- acceptance of resignation from the city manager Greg Sun. Mister Sun has submitted his resignation to the city council. And we are here tonight to vote whether we accept or not. So at this point in time, I would like to get a motion from council.
So moved.
To what?
To accept his resignation.
Second please.
Second.
Any discussion on the matter, which we take?
Not for me.
Karen.
No second.
Is it?
No second.
Right, no additional comments? Call go please.
Benado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Could you have a comment, if I may, concerning that? And... There's been a lot of hearsay going around all over town already. It's very discouraging and disruptive. You know, and I think we, Greg, something, you know, he's been here, he's helped this one, been in a lot of different ways. And we want to thank him for that. The problem is, there's a lot of speculation going on in the community by some particular individual or individuals. And all this speculation, all it does is create more speculation of what the heck is going on. And I don't agree with it. To be honest with you, it just, it gets me upset. I just, I don't want to say the words, but it gets me very upset. Whoever wrote, I got something that was posted on Facebook, I guess, last night or the last few days, from someone saying that Mister Greg, Mister Sun was going to either resign or get fired. That's bull. How did that person know that? That's not up to, that's up to council. You know, whatever negotiations we did with him, that's up to us. And for someone to speculate, it's wrong. And I really believe whoever wrote that owes Mister Greg Sun an apology. Because it's very disparaging to him and could possibly be very damaging to him if he decides to apply for a job elsewhere. So whoever, you know, wrote that, I wish that they would take upon themselves to begin to wait till the end and then ask questions. And quit asking questions in between and making up their own ideas as to what the heck is going on. We need to respect Mister Sun's decision. I do, and I believe all the council does, absolutely. With that being said, I wish Mister Sun the best in moving forward, whatever he decides to do. Whether he stays here in Trinidad or he moves on, we all hope that he and his wife, whatever they do, the best. Item number two, appointment of interim city manager. I've had the opportunity to speak to Mister Valentine. Mister Valentine was the interim city manager previously. And Mister Valentine, we're going to vote, will you accept the interim city manager's position?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Yes, I would, with the caveat that we have a good staff already. I will carry forward and keep the city going the best I can with your help and staff that we have.
And like I mentioned to you, I will, you know, of all the things that I know that are going on, I will see with you and fill you in on what those are. And I'm sure council will probably do the same for anything that you guys might have or questions or concerns. They will want to schedule one-on-one. The thing that I would like to recommend to council is I know that I have a one-on-one every two weeks with Mister Sun. And I would recommend that all the council go to a one, maybe every other week, instead of, some of council has a weekly thing. And the reason being that, the reason for that is because you're not only taking on the responsibility of city manager, but you're still going to have your responsibilities that you're doing on a day-to-day basis today along with the staff that you oversee. So we need to be respectful of every time, so I would ask that the council do that, if you will, please. I appreciate that. We have a motion for the appointment of Mister Mike Valentine as interim city manager. So, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any thoughts?
I just have one thing to say.
What?
We're going to support you, Mike, council is, and staff, whatever. You know, I think we're a pretty good team, all of us, and I'm more than happy to do my share to keep the transition going. Whatever you need, I mean, you've got it. Thank you for doing this, boys.
Call go please.
Benado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item three, direction regarding filling permanent city manager position. I think let's just go ahead and take a, just have some kind of discussion on this. We'll probably have to have more discussion on this. And I know that the last time that we had this, we were in a situation, we hired a firm to go out and search. So with that being said, let's go ahead and get some discussion. Mister Benado, any thoughts?
Well, this isn't my first rodeo on doing this. I went to four city managers since I've been sitting on this council, and it's tough, it's tough. You know, everything looks good on paper when you get all the resumes and stuff like that. But the point of view is this, is that sometimes we go from the frying pan into the fire. So we've got to be awfully careful of what, I don't know how, how we're going to go, if I'm going to still be here when we, when we look for another city manager, because we're terminated and stuff like that. But the point of view is that I just hope that the person we get has the knowledge and the capabilities of what this city is facing today. And I think that's what happened with Mister Sun, one comment, is that everything came to a head at one time with the vicious big, uh, part, uh, space to create and all this stuff. It's tough, not only on him, but it was tough on us now. And I look at it this way, losing maybe three or four council, uh, people or something, or mayor or whatever, and now losing our city manager, I just hope to God that whoever fills these seats has the capability of knowing what's going on in this town. When I was first left at the council, my first, first two years, I was scared as hell to say something. Because I, right, can I do this, can I do that? And it takes a council person one to two years to figure out what's going on. And that's what it takes like our city manager. And I, I look at the point of, you know, I've had Mister Valentine stepped up to the plate. I know when I told him the time for talking has expired and the time for doing something is now. I know he took that to heart. And I know he's the person that's going to go after to fix these infrastructures and stuff like that. But like I say, it's going to be tough. And I hope the public and the people know, since we lost the city manager, we lost, we lose three council members or whatever. It's going to be tough a while. It's going to be tough. And that's where we're going to have to rely heavily, more heavily, on our staff to promote things. Until they get their feet wet and until they know what's going on, it's going to be awfully tough. But like I say, that's all I have to say, Mister Mayor. And like I say, with fans fires in the council, I don't know, I don't know how this is going to work out. Like I say, you know, it takes time to get resumes, it takes time to advertise, and, you know, it's tough, it's tough.
What's your, what's your feelings about moving forwards, you know, with hiring, looking at maybe the same firm that we had the last time? Get some estimates from them, what are your thoughts?
Anytime you hire a firm like that, they're going to kind of recommend, it's like we don't recommend with Mister Sun. I mean, it was a point of view that, you know, everything was hunky-dory, and like I said before, everything looks good on paper. It's not, it's not like you lived here before and you know everybody in this community. You're coming in, maybe even we have people in our community that would be interested. I know we had people before, I don't know. But the point of view is that to spend that kind of money and do all these things like that, I think is the wrong thing to do. I think this council has the ability and the knowledge to pick out a resume that's, like I say, pick out the best resume. That could be the worst one you can get. But Michelle and I and stuff like that, we, we went through this.
Anthony as well.
Huh?
He's been on longer than I, Anthony.
Yeah, and it's tough, and it's tough. But I'm glad it, it came to a point where Mister Sun resigned, not listened, and we accepted it. And like Mister Rico said, I wish Mister Sun the best of luck in his ventures and what he does, and to his family, so. Keep that under your hat, Mike and Audra and everybody, it's going to be tough for a while.
I think we should definitely go in the direction of hiring a firm to assist us with this and expedite it. I think we should utilize our resources at DOLA. They can recommend firms and give us success rates on city managers that can be hired from them firms. And I think that'd be an avenue that is free and a service they provide that would assist us in picking a firm that has a good track record with city managers. I think that's the direction I feel we should go.
It's the same thing we did last year, I mean, with Mister Sun.
This is, this is a difficult timing for Trinidad, because we're facing an election. And we have a new council, we have three new city council members who are going to be seated in January. And one of my concerns has been that, how long can we go on the path that we've been going on? And then suddenly we got a new council and they might feel like their hands are tied because they don't know the situation. And I was concerned about making transitions at that point. As I think about this further, I wonder whether it is also fair to ask staff to wait for permanent direction, not just like a holding pattern, but permanent direction on what's going on. I would like to suggest that in tandem with perhaps hiring a special firm and perhaps leaving that to the next council to decide, they should probably hire their own city council member, that we conduct an internal search as well. And I think we've got enough going on right now that I think it's, it behooves us to keep things going and to make whatever organizational changes need to be made. And to do it sooner rather than later. And I don't know whether that's by having this council hire the new council or doing an internal search. And that will create stability and will also give some stability to the new council, I hope.
Good man. Explain the internal search.
Existing experienced staff with institutional knowledge, existing employees.
Look, keep with it, okay, I got you. Thank you, man.
Uh, I seem to have the same sentiments as Councilmember Goodall. I think that, being that we still have a job to do, we have, you know, four and a half months left, or three and a half months left on our term, this is still in our hands and this is something that I feel that is our responsibility. And I've never been of the ilk to want to pass something on to the next day, but maybe that's because I've only had one term and have not gone through two. But that's how I feel right now. I do know that CML does have resources as well to help us, which could be alleviating of any resources in terms of financial costs that could benefit us, so we could find a company to do something like that, or use a municipal organization to help out. Now, I do agree though with the institutional knowledge from within. There is a lot of things, moving parts, components that are going on right now that our staff would be tremendously beneficial to whoever comes in, whether it's in-house or from outsourced supply. But I do, I've always felt this way, I feel that Trinidad will always be worthy of having professionals that can carry on. Not that our people aren't professionals, but sometimes it's good to have an outside source coming in and looking in it from an objective point of view. Sometimes it's bad. Timing is of the essence, and I am still wanting to have more options than less. So I feel that having an outsourced company like CML, DOLA, even if we went through Aderson, or, what was it? Adolf Peterson? Adolf Peterson? Might be another option, but I feel that this is still our job right now while we're sitting in these seats.
Karen.
I agree with Councilman Lopez as far as it's my job to continue on without any kind of delay. I didn't have the benefit of picking Mister Sun, but I worked well with him. And that's just the nature of government entities. They're designed where transition should run smoothly. I do believe we need to do a private firm, and I do believe we have to do the internal step, uh, search as well. We owe it to our employees, if any of them want to do the job, if they're qualified, I think we can do all at one time. What I do know, if there's a bright spot in this situation, is that I do believe that Trinidad's financial situation is better than it was two and a half years ago or three years ago, however long it was when you appointed Mister Sun. And I do believe this community is very marketable, it's very appealing to young, to professionals. I don't have any doubt that we'll be able to fill this position pretty well.
Good thing. I think that our, our needs will be best served with a national search to include assistance from the people that have helped us in the past, DOLA, CML, and the like. It's important that we do that, I think, to, and I believe that we, as Karen has suggested, are in a position to attract, given the state of affairs here and all that is going on, the vicious big project, the part of Trinidad, the new problem area. We find ourselves in a position to attract a higher caliber of applicant, I would think. So that, as I said, I do recognize the benefit of an internal search, but I don't want to create a duplication of effort so that while we're looking for somebody, we were looking for somebody and now we've got two. It's my, my personal belief, that with all due regard and respect for your comment, that it's probably appropriate to continue with Mister Valentine. And I think the last time we had kind of a triage of a committee to kind of bridge the gap between what we had and what we were hoping to get, that to, to yourself, Audra and Mike, I remember. But be that as it may, I'm sure that without a formal situation where we have a committee, Mike will be able to, to handle it. And, and I suppose if, if he wanted to, he could indicate that he has a preference to turn this into a permanent thing. And, and in that respect, I see the benefit of an internal search. But that's one of those conversations, and now is not the time. Then we need to have with Mister Valentine to see what his desires and expectations are. That having been addressed, then I think it's best to conduct a national search. I realize it will be a little bit more costly than we might expect, but at the same time, this is not a Mickey Mouse operation. This is a multi-million dollar business. And we need somebody to steer the ship who has the qualifications and capabilities above and beyond institutional knowledge to keep it going, to keep it afloat. So that having been said, I think that the sequential things to do would be to have a visit with Mister Valentine and anyone else who might be interested. And, and I realize that that's maybe informal and kind of a good old boy southern mentality. But, but it's not. It's, it's taking those resources we have available to us and getting the best benefit from them. And at the same time, not closing ourselves to other options. It's going to be, it's going to be a tough thing, it's going to require, as you have suggested at the onset, cooperation from the community, cooperation from staff, and certainly healthy relationships between board and everyone else in the council. It's just one of those things that now is the time to step forward and act with integrity and character.
You know, I spent yesterday and today writing down a lot of the stuff that we have going on. And there's a list, it was a big list. And I've talked to Mike, and I will sit with him and go over, just like I mentioned, I think every one of us, we have something to add to that. That's great, because we need to keep those lines of communication open with him. Because not only is he going to have his managerial head on, but he's also going to have his managing head on what he's doing today. So that national search, I think is, I think we need to have that national search, because like a couple of you who I said, Trinidad has become more marketable. You mentioned, you know, the multi-million dollar facility or governmental agency that we operate here. And we need to try and find the best possible prospect that we can find. We owe that to the citizens of this community, to find the best person. And I will do whatever we, whatever I can and write, you know, ask the right questions when it comes to it to make sure that we hopefully can find that right person that has a broad vision of Trinidad, but also can bring something in, if that's what ends up happening, but also can look at the, at the community, its finances, and everything that we have going on, because we own all our utilities. Because, I mean, so this is a massive project for anybody to take on. So we need to keep that mindset open. And I am of the opinion of that I think a national search is necessary. And, you know, we can look at internal if somebody wishes to look at it, that's okay. We need to be open to all options.
How many times, and you're new to this, because you had, this is the first time you went to a city manager.
No, second time.
Second time. Oh, okay, excuse me. But you're looking at a national, I'm not saying not going out of town or whatever, out of state or whatever to find advertising a city manager. But the last three or four times that we've done this, the city manager, even with the respect of who recommended them with the survey, has led us down, has led us down. Yeah, yeah, Karen, you don't know about how, how they led us down, you know, I doubt.
Please keep, please keep your opinions short and not, like, too full of something, yeah? Say what you've got to say.
Don't shake your head.
Okay. Either we conduct, you conduct this appropriately, or I'll, I'll end this meeting.
So generally, how long do you think this search opened?
How long did it go on the last time? Do you remember, Audra?
Two and a half months, if that, because you had a ninety-day caveat to serve, and we filled it before that.
It was longer than that.
I think it was four, like, four months.
It was one month. Check your app.
Well, and, and you get a, a lot of, of applications and you, there are, there are different kinds of phases that you go through as, as you're.
Because I remember that, you know, we, we found the company, they went out for the search, they did their own due diligence with those applications. They brought forward the, the, the packet.
Correct.
And then they had the recommendations, and there we chose the three people and the interview, and then we chose. So we took, we took that.
We gave them like a priority list, a medium, medium, and then like a minimum list, and we would accept.
And I think you had, if memory serves, like, you, you narrowed the field, like, to eight or something like that, and then cut it down further from there for the people that are going to be interviewing. Also, the company name, I believe, is Austin Peters.
Austin Peters, that's it.
I only know that because I asked Ms. Garrett. So I did put that as the name of the company. That was utilized before. And I, just to kind of comment on, on what I have heard you say thus far, council, and that is, it does sound like a majority of you would prefer to have a national search. And it, whatever your, your decision is, ultimately, it does seem to have, it, it seems better to have more options initially and then narrow it down, rather than narrow yourself and then have to plot and try to cast a wide.
I just put myself in that category as well, I guess, I just want to make sure that we explore all valuable shortcuts to keep us going in the right direction. And I don't mean shortcut, what I mean is a burden.
I submit, to Mister, to Councilman Benado's point, the, Jim Saltus was the city manager for twenty-one years.
Wow.
You know, he was, for a really long time, I'm guessing or estimating it to be twenty-one years. But my point is, society as it now exists is more transient. And I don't mean to be cute about that, it's transient. And if people move, people change, and to get some, it's not like people got out of high school, went to work in the Alamoine and worked there twenty-five years till they had a retirement or black lung and dead died. Those days are gone. People move. I, my daughter, my youngest daughter graduated from college a couple, six years ago, and she's had four jobs in her short career. And they're always upward mobility than I've had in my lifetime. That's just the way it is. Doctors change, so to expect professionals to come and remain forever is probably not going to happen. So what we have to do is, in my mind, get in step with what's going on and take advantage of the best that can serve us for the longest possible time, recognizing that nobody's going to sign in blood for a lifetime contract, but commit.
Which is a fascinating concern. And I, and I agree with you, and I think the best thing that we need to do is to find that person to see, see what a particular person will bring to the table.
Got you, I understand. But my point is, is the basic foundation, we're not going to find somebody who's going to work here for thirty years. That's probably not going to happen.
And no guy would really want someone to work for thirty years, because then ideas become stagnant. You may have a grand line with one thing, and you get to run on that same.
That's quite right, is that right, if I speak?
Sorry.
I want to make sure we don't repeat some past mistakes and have a short, live city manager. I like the idea of people with roots, and I've always been impressed that there's so little transients within the city of Trinidad. And there's people with roots here, I'll make sure we're not overlooking that.
Right.
Okay, it sounds like, you know, I guess, Audra, Mike, you've heard kind of what our considerations are and start looking around and bringing it to council. And we'll have to have a work session on the property.
I was going to say, don't mean to interrupt, we have a work session coming Monday. Could this be a topic we add on and get started on this immediately?
Not sure if we need any more discussion at this point, other than I know that we, right, it sounded like the majority would like to find, they'll look internally, but also look for a, a firm out in Mike, what you've got.
So I would like to have some concrete stuff to present rather than to talk again. I would like to have a productive work session, so if you would, give staff a little bit of time to gather information on firms and CML and DOLA and everything, and then, then have some. and CML and DOLA and everything, and then, then have something for you guys to.
Probably a couple of weeks down the road, the next one. We don't want to rush into this one.
Well said, sir.
I applaud you taking charge of it. I don't need it, I'm serious.
Yeah.
No, you're right, that's the kind of leadership that we need.
Thank you. Motion adjourned.
So moved.
First and second, call vote please.
Benado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.